Good evening, everyone. The Board has already met in executive session and we saluted the flag at that time, so we welcome you here tonight. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education of Bernards Township. Notice of the time and place of the meeting was provided and copies of that resolution were forwarded to the official newspapers as designated by the Board of Education and to the township clerk, and a copy of notice was posted on the bulletin board at the Board of Education offices in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Due to the public health emergency in the state of New Jersey as declared in Executive Order 103, the Board will be suspending its normal meeting procedures this evening and conducting a virtual meeting. Directions for accessing the virtual public meeting were posted on the district website These same directions were posted at our intended but unavailable meeting location. We very much welcome input from the public. Because this is a virtual meeting, public comment will be handled as follows. Email to btconnect@bernardsboe.com or text 908-292-3047. Use public comment as the email subject or the start of the text message. Indicate your first and last name and address. This is required for your public comment to be included. I'm going to repeat that because this is a common issue. Please include your first and last name and your address so that your comment can be read into the record. Keep your comments to a maximum of approximately three minutes if read allowed. Individuals are allowed a maximum of one public comment during public comment on agenda items and another one in the non-agenda portion of the public comment. The Board reserves the right to limit the length of time allotted for public comment. This evening, we will be keeping it to 45 minutes as we've done the last two meetings. Again, please include your name, first and last, and address. Mr. McLaughlin, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Beckman?
Here.
Ms. Shaver?
Here.
Mr. Salmon?
Here.
Mrs. White?
Here.
Mrs. McCune?
Here.
Mrs. Waldridge?
Here.
Mrs. Corn? Mrs. Richmond?
Here.
Mr. Markarian?
Here.
Mr. Syatt?
Here.
Mrs. Gray?
Here.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Madam President?
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Our next item is the Student Representative Report. Juliette, I see you're here. Thanks. I'll turn it over to you.
Hi. Just as a quick introduction, because I know this is my first time here, my name is Juliette Knoll. I'm a current senior here at Ridge High School. I sort of wasn't quite sure what to expect coming into this, but I did put together a couple of notes just from the students on how, you know, this whole virtual learning situation has gone. First and foremost, people made really clear that they wanted to thank their teachers. They've been making such an extraordinary effort to really go above and beyond in providing resources and being available and really catering towards their students when I know it's very difficult and there's a lot of transitions towards independent learning. Additionally, a lot of the clubs and sport activities are moving forward. We're trying to retain as much normalcy as possible. So, for example, drama, forensics, those are sort of shifting into an online medium as much as they can, and sports are starting to come back as well. In terms of student government, we're trying to, once again, sort of the theme of retaining normalcy, trying to encourage some sort of homecoming plans if that would be at all possible. And then, a lot of the other clubs are engaging in Zoom meetings and trying to encourage freshmen to join as much as they can. I know that the peer leaders today had their freshman tours for Ridge, and so one of the big initiatives we're trying to have is to make sure that the underclassmen stay engaged, especially as it becomes more difficult over the virtual platforms.
Thank you, Juliette. That was great. And from what I heard, which was only a little bit, the peer leaders today went very well. So hopefully, that was the feedback from anyone who attended. Any questions for Juliette? Or comment?
I have a freshman that went today, and he said it was very great. He had a great time, and it went smoothly. The pickup and drop-off went well, so that was good. As far as getting freshmen interested in clubs, I was, I think, a lot of the clubs have been brainstorming ways to try to reach out to them virtually, because it's a little harder to get a kid to log into a Zoom meeting when they have never met any of the people in the club. So I know the clubs had taken names of students who were interested, but I think some of the students might have been just overwhelmed in the spring and that they might not have gone to the virtual activities fair or really know what to do with that information. So if you could just pass along back through to the students that anything they can do to find creative ways to try to get the freshmen to, you know, try to join a virtual club.
Yeah, absolutely. There's a lot of emphasis on trying to making a very welcoming atmosphere, because we understand how difficult it can be to meet people over Zoom for the first time, but thank you so much for your input.
Mrs. Corn?
I want to say thank you for being here. It's exciting to have a new face in our little boxes of Zooms. My daughter, the peer leader, she's so excited. She's a junior, so she was up there, and she, and they're actually right now having a live peer leader meeting on the turf, socially distanced and freezing, I'm sure, but they're all excited to get, see each other face-to-face, which I think is really great, and it was, I'm glad it went really well today, because that's a great, you know, start to getting kids back in school.
Ms. Beckman?
Welcome, Juliette. It's really nice to get the students back. We miss Jimmy, and we welcome you and look forward to working with you all year.
Great, thank you so much.
I think I got Mrs. White's hand, too.
I know last year, there was a virtual activities fair, and a lot of the clubs made little videos. I'm wondering if it's possible to make that available for freshmen to see again?
I think it actually, it was in their orientation on their, you know, when they had their freshman online orientation, it was one of the modules in there. I saw it in there. So they have access to it. I was more trying to think of the freshman who, even though they saw it, might not have the nerve to like, reach out to a club. So maybe the club leaders could try to like, find this freshman that had expressed interest.
Anyone else for Juliette?
All right, thanks so much, Juliette. As always, you're welcome to stay, but if you have homework or something that needs your attention, we understand.
Great, thank you.
Our next item is the Board presentation on the return to instruction update.
Thank you. Welcome, Juliette. You're welcome to stick around if you want to watch this. So thanks, everyone, for being here tonight. We are a week away from our last Board of Ed meeting, so there isn't a tremendous amount of new information, but at our last meeting, we did talk about the fact that we spent most of our discussion time a week ago tonight focusing on the virtual program that was in place, and I had mentioned that tonight, we would talk a little bit about the changes that are upcoming with respect to beginning some of our in-person blended learning program on the A-Day, B-Day cohorts. So that's the purpose of tonight's discussion, to give folks some reminders about how that is going to go. So with that being said, I will share a screen here and get this going. So basically, I'll be speaking tonight largely with a little tag teaming from our assistant superintendents, Mr. Syatt and Ms. Fox. And just to get started, I wanted to let everybody know that we have been doing a lot of great work in preparing our schools for reopening to be ready for in-person instruction. I know there's been a lot of dialogue over the last couple of months about preparations in terms of the physical plant, all the various supplies and materials that we feel we need in order to have our schools ready, and I'm pleased to say that we are doing very well in that area. And then, at this stage of the game, our, one of our primary challenges is, of course, staff and having our staffing lined up. And I know that Mr. Syatt is here tonight. He can give us a quick update on how things are going with staffing, as he has been working overtime, trying to keep up with all of the movement happening and making sure that we have the resources necessary to bring students back safely. So, Mr. Syatt?
Thank you, Ms. Markarian. So let me start by saying thank you to everyone. I know that Mr. Markarian in the SOS Express put the call for substitutes and aides out, and we've had a number of community members reach out to us this week, and we actually have some being board-approved on the agenda. So that was wonderful. We appreciate the support. We also have a number of community members slated for our substitute orientation, which is going to be this Friday, so it's not too late to apply to be a substitute in the district. We have about 30 folks that collected an application, and we expect about, so far, we have about 10 confirmed for Friday. So we feel in a pretty good place with our substitutes, and we're also making efforts to assign what used to be called permanent substitutes to our buildings so that we can ensure that we have coverage in buildings, even if there are some type of short-term notice given for a leave. We'll be able to cover that daily absence with these folks. In terms of aides and teachers, you know, as it seems to be the norm lately with the uncertainty, we've had a number of resignations, retirements, leave requests. Luckily, things have started to slow down, knock on wood, over the last couple of days here, and so we're trying to stabilize our numbers and our vacancies, and we are starting to now bring that vacancy number down. So over the next couple of agendas, you might have noticed that we've been adding some positions back to fill our ranks. We have an addendum tonight with another four positions on it in addition to what's on the agenda, and then I have another four to five staff members already confirmed for October the 5th. So I do believe that by the time October the 5th rolls around, I'm hoping that our staffing vacancy number is close to cut in half. The other thing to keep in mind with our vacancy numbers are that those are vacancies that we're projecting out between now and January. So some of the vacancies aren't immediate, so we do have time to fill those. So the other piece is aides. Aides is probably the greatest area of concern in terms of vacancies, trying to fill those. That's why we were able to hire three today, which I was pleased with, and so we continue to make progress there. So again, the hope is that by the October 5th meeting, we continue to bring our numbers down. So that SOS plug is still out there, that if you're interested in becoming an aide or a substitute, those links are live in this presentation, which I know will be available after the board meeting, so I would encourage you to apply. I've gotten a number of emails from folks with questions, so please continue to keep those questions coming in if you have any regarding the application process. But right now, we're in a good place staffing-wise to be ready to open fully for students on the first.
Thanks, Mr. Syatt, and I know that...
Yeah, the magic custodians. Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Markarian. So in terms of air mark, I know we reported out last time that there were a total of six vacancies on the air mark staff in terms of our custodial services. The air mark corporation was able to report that they have hired one custodian, so now we've got five vacancies in our custodial workforce. So there's some progress being made there. Hope to continue to see some made there as well. Apologies for missing that.
No, thank you, Mr. Syatt. I know that Mr. Syatt just mentioned, actually, that these presentations are posted to the district website with those links. I do want to just mention that we did record, as we always do, our Board of Education meeting from last Monday. I know that that file was extremely large and it's taken quite a bit of time to get through and do the downloading and the converting into something that we can post. So that was still in process today. However, please note that typically on the Tuesday after a Board of Education meeting, whatever presentation was given is posted to the district website. So even though some of the other content and the video stream is not posted to the district website right away, normally, whatever the presentation is, will be posted the day after the board meeting. So we should have this up for you tomorrow as we typically do. And then, as soon as we get the video recordings all loaded up, they'll be on the website as well. So just some reminders with respect to the dates for reopening in-person instruction. We've already hit a couple of the benchmarks. The first couple were the September 10th and September 15th dates. Tomorrow, we have another major benchmark where we're bringing in many more students with the PALS preschool program, the elementary BD program, the elementary LOD program, and resource rooms for grades K1 and 2. And also tomorrow, we start with our general education programs, grades K1 and 2 on the A cohort. Finally, next week, we bring in the remaining students, which is a Thursday, October 1st, so those students will be coming in on the B cohort. I received a question today asking about virtual programming for the 100% virtual students. The question was, will that programming continue while we're starting the in-person blended program back in the schools? And the answer is yes. So what's new for this week? Well, I wanted to just mention Zoom and ask Ms. Fox to speak about this a little bit, because we just started something new today, and I wanted her to have the chance to give us all some feedback from what she saw on how that went.
Thank you. Sure, as most of you probably know, today, we implemented a new security feature in Zoom by having, really turning on the authenticated users feature, which, so for students in grades 3 through 12, they need to be authenticated to join any class meeting, and that just simply means Zoom would only recognize their entry into the meeting by having them log in with their school email and login information, which would be their Gmail address. So they are signing in through Google. The intention behind making a switch like that right now is really just for the teachers to know who is coming into their meetings and having a greater level of assurance that it is the students entering the meetings. It provides them with some additional features that they can use within the meetings to take advantage of some of the enhancements that require some greater security to use. But, you know, as with any of the security measures that we seek to put in place, because that is of utmost importance to us, it does also depend on the students maintaining their own security of their email and student password. So just as in with any access that students have, if they share it with anybody, then that, that security feature kind of goes away. And so I would really strongly encourage, you know, the students to recognize that they've signed the responsible use agreement, and we're looking to them to help us keep these meetings secure so that we can continue to have this kind of a, you know, more engaging interaction between the students and the teachers. So I did share this video last week to show students and parents how the login to Zoom works. There were certainly some students who encountered problems today, and we were troubleshooting that with either the students themselves or their parents and the teachers. I would say that there weren't significant numbers of that, and so if you have a couple of students in a class with a problem logging in, but the rest can log in, it is most likely a user error on the login process. And so some of the more common problems I encountered today were students not signing in using Google. That's one really important step, and you also cannot type in the email address and password. You really need to click on Sign In with Google and click on Your Account in order for that to work. So some kids encountered a problem when they didn't do that way. I also am still troubleshooting some problems where it looks like if students are signed in on multiple devices or in their, in multiple devices on their Google account, it would interfere in their ability to sign in. So sometimes, when we asked them to sign out of all of their devices, it got them into the meetings. I'm still looking at a few other issues that parents sent me that seem to be isolated to just a few students, but we will certainly communicate with them as soon as we get some answers. But I think with anything, right, it's the first day, and we made a big change, and I think it's going to be an enhancement for the students in grades 3 through 12, and so I think it's just going to take a couple of days to work out the kinks, or hopefully just today, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Thank you. Okay, so something else that is new for many families will be the submission of the daily COVID-19 screening form. The idea of this form is to make sure that students are healthy before reporting to school for in-person classes. The form should be submitted 30 minutes prior to the start of the school day. In the event that a screening form isn't completed, students won't be able to continue in their classes, but they'll be sent to an isolation area until such time that they can be screened by the nursing staff, and parents can be reached so that we can get the necessary form completed. Many families will start submitting this form tomorrow because of the fact that we are beginning a whole new round of in-person instruction, as I mentioned earlier, for some of our other special needs programs and our general education K1, 2 students. The form is typically available at midnight, so you can't fill them out in advance. You have to wait for the day of, the date that you are going to report to the school. And as Ms. Fox mentioned about the Zoom login, she also was kind enough to prepare an instructional video for how to submit the daily COVID-19 screening form through Genesis. I shared that link to the video that she had made for you on Friday in my SOS Express, and it's also here in this presentation. So this is just kind of a plea and a reminder for parents. If you are sending a child to school for in-person classes, please do submit that form through Genesis in advance of the school day. It'll just help us have a smoother start to the school day. In addition, there is also a daily attendance form, and I just wanted to emphasize that that form is only for use if your child is not going to be participating in school for the entire day. I mentioned this at our last meeting. If you are interested in letting the school know about a situation where a student's going to miss just part of the day, you wouldn't need to submit this form. You would contact the school pursuant to the directions that the principal has provided. This form is only to be used when a child will not be participating for the entire school day. And remember that school for us right now is sometimes in-person and sometimes virtual. So regardless of whether the student is participating in a virtual school day or they are participating in person, if they are not reporting to school, either in-person or virtual, this form would be completed. It allows the nurses to quickly process the reasons why students are not attending school, and our school nurses can then follow up appropriately whenever there may be a health concern, just to make sure that our students are doing well. This form is also located in Genesis, as is the daily COVID screening form, under the Forms tab. So as I mentioned, our big change for this week is beginning in-person instruction for some new groups of students. This is just a reminder that these in-person classes will begin at 8:45 a.m. and end at 1 p.m., with one exception, our PALS pre-K program is an AM/PM program. The AM group in the morning is from 8:15 a.m. to 10:15 a.m., and the PM session is from 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. So looking ahead to next week, I wanted to talk a little bit about the fact that we will start some new in-person programs for the balance of our students, as I mentioned, on Thursday, October 1st. And it's really important, as we approach next week, that everyone takes a very careful look at instructions that are sent from each of the schools. The principals have all been doing a great job providing specific communications with regard to their particular buildings about how the school day is going to operate. Things like drop-off locations and car lines, things of that nature, are particular to each of the individual schools, which is why you need to focus on the information sent by the principals. I did ask them for tonight if they had any quick hitter reminders that they would like me to share, that I could easily include them, so you will see a few reminders from some of our principals tonight, but I strongly urge you to look for communications from each of the schools that your children attend. So as I mentioned, next week, on Thursday, October 1st, we will begin the blended model for grades 3 through 12. That's an in-person model. So Thursday, the first date, will be for B cohort students. The elementary day is 8:45 to 1:00, the middle school 7:45 to 12:15, and the high school 7:35 to 12:05. It's really important that everyone is aware of the A cohort/B cohort schedule. Remember that our idea was to reduce our class size by having students come to school on some days and stay home on other days. So our A cohort students are in school on Mondays and Tuesdays. The B cohort students are in school on Thursdays and Fridays. Wednesdays, grade 6 to 12 students will all be virtual, while elementary students will alternate Wednesdays in person. So the A-Day, B-Day calendar, which is hyperlinked here, alternate Wednesdays in person, is especially important for our elementary students as they take turns coming to school on alternating Wednesdays, depending on whether or not that Wednesday is designated for the A cohort or the B cohort. It should also be noted that many of our special education programs are coming in every day, running Monday through Friday on an in-person basis. So just to clarify, this slide, you may recall having seen in the past when we were first sharing our programs for the hybrid schedule, is for the elementary schools. It is basically running from the same timeframe as the current schedule from 8:45 to 1 o'clock. However, there is a slight difference in the dismissal process in this case. Some reminders from your elementary school principals. Mount Prospect asked me to remind you that their back-to-school night is on September 22nd, so tomorrow. The elementary school doors are open at 8:30 for drop-off. As I mentioned, dismissal's at 1 p.m. There's lots of reminders throughout here to remember extra masks and a bag to store used extra, used masks when you are coming to school. Multiple principals asked me to remind you to bring snacks and a water bottle since we're not serving lunches. And finally, please remember that the A cohort starts this week on Tuesday and Wednesday should be, I think we have a typo in the date, the 22nd and 23rd is the A cohort, the 24th and 25th is the B cohort. We'll correct that before we send this out. Okay. This is the A-Day, B-Day cohort for the middle school. It's simply the schedule that they have been using already, except it highlights the fact that Monday and Tuesday is for the A cohort, Thursday and Friday is for the B cohort. Wednesday, all the students are remote by a different schedule, and you'll notice there's a little bit of a difference in the timing for the afternoon than we're currently running because of the fact that teachers and students are in transit at dismissal time. Currently, with everyone being on virtual, we don't have a transit time for dismissal. The same situation's true, by the way, at the high school, and we'll look at that in a minute. Mrs. Hudok sent me a bunch of reminders for you, reminders about how to report for being late to school or early dismissal. We presented on that previously. Mrs. Hudok has some events planned. She asked me to share as well. And finally, she wanted me to remind everyone about the arrival process, that the school doors will be open at 7:25 a.m., and that's when parents can begin to drop off their students. As I mentioned earlier, parents will receive specific detailed instructions about the drop-off, pickup, car lines, and so on directly from the principals. When students arrive to school, Mrs. Hudok wanted me to remind the students of their reporting locations for 6th grade, 7th grade, and 8th grade. As I mentioned, the Ridge High School schedule is very similar to the William-Adon schedule. Again, we are highlighting here in the different colors the cohorts. A cohort Monday and Tuesday, B cohort Thursday and Friday, and the Wednesday schedule where all students are remote. You'll notice the same difference here, where in the afternoon, there is some designated time where students and staff may be in transit after dismissal. Dr. Laszloth shared a few things in terms of reminders for you tonight. His back-to-school night is Thursday, September 24th. His attendance reminders are also shown. And he wanted me to remind folks that after-school activities, so students that are looking to come to school for... to come to school for practice, remember that that practice or that after-school activity would begin after the school instructional day is over. Since the school instructional day continues virtually after students go home at 12:05 from the high school, then the students do need to go home, finish their school day, and then when the school day is over, they need to return to school in order to participate in their activity. Finally, information for in-person instruction will continue to be shared, and he asked me to encourage you to look at the Distance Learning Hub on the Ridge High School webpage for all your questions about our current learning programs at the high school. Some general considerations that I wanted to remind you of. We talked about the fact that there's slight differences in schedules once we start with the blended learning programs because the afternoon times factor in dismissal and transit. There are no lunch periods. We spoke about that. Students are encouraged to bring snacks and a water bottle. Alex Blender, our IT director, asked me to let you know that at this point, the Chromebook supply has really dwindled down, almost to the point where the devices that we have remaining, he needs to hang on to to help support the fleet that's already been issued. He said he's issued approximately 1,200 Chromebooks to various community members, and then he needs to retain some in order to keep that fleet working. We also are retaining some Chromebooks, you may remember from some of my earlier conversations in the buildings, in order that we can save the elementary students from having to take a Chromebook back and forth to school. We are looking to purchase more Chromebooks, and unfortunately, right now, our order is not projected to come in until March. The reason for that is associated with the fact that we don't just look to grab any of the readily available consumer Chromebooks that you might be able to purchase easily online. We're looking at specific devices that are configured to match the specifications from the IT department. We're looking to minimize the number of different manufacturers so that the IT staff becomes most familiar with the type of device and how to support the device and maintain the device. And finally, when it comes to the power supplies, we like to try to make sure that we're not running around with five or six different types of power adapters. So we really try to minimize the variety and the number of Chromebooks that we are purchasing. So I did ask our IT director to beat the bushes, if you will, to see if there was anyone that could supply the type of Chromebooks that he was looking to order before March. So we'll see if that can happen, but right now, he's being told March is when he should expect his order to come in. And finally, on the subject of masks, this just kind of occurred to me as I was actually driving back and forth to work. I noticed some students out of bus stops, and, you know, they're not wearing masks in some cases, and it is important, students are required to wear masks on the school buses. So please keep that in mind. I would strongly encourage everyone to be wearing a mask at all times at the bus stop. They need to, the students need to be wearing their mask on the school bus. We have spoken to our transportation provider. They are supposed to have extra masks on the school bus in the event that a student does not have one, but I would strongly ask for your support in sending students to school with a mask on and a backup mask in the event that something happens, maybe one of the ear loops breaks on a mask, and they need to have a spare mask. So a strong pitch to please have the students go to school with their masks so that they can have them on the school bus as well. These reminders are from Special Services. We shared these last Monday as well. I think the pitch that I have heard consistently from our Director of Special Services, Gene O'Connell, is to please communicate, communicate, communicate with case managers. We are looking to work with our students to make their programs as effective as they can be, regardless of whether it's in-person or virtual, and that obviously takes a little bit of extra communication in the environment that we're working in. Health considerations, we shared many of these. Ms. Arbera was kind enough to join us at our last meeting in detail, many of them. But just a simple reminder for our students that are coming to school starting tomorrow and also next week. These are the basic reminders that the school nurses are asking us to remember over and over and over. The first is that if you don't feel well, stay home. Remember to wash your hands or and/or use hand sanitizer and watch your distance, right? Trying to create some social distance between one another is really the linchpin of all the different activities that we've scheduled in terms of our in-person program and our A-day, B-day cohort, to try to make that relatively feasible for people to have space to stay away from each other in close proximity. That's what our schedule is built upon right now. So we really are emphasizing that, and of course, wearing a mask, we already talked about. This is really my last pitch in a public Board of Education meeting because, and I say that last pitch, meaning the last opportunity to remind everyone of this, prior to October 1st, we do not have another board meeting until October 5th. So I just wanted to take one more moment to remind everyone that a lot of our ability to be successful is going to be based on good decision-making about our health. And I know so many people have reached out asking for ways to try to be supportive, and really, this is the key area right here. This is the most important thing. Be conservative in your judgment about how people are feeling and whether or not they might be sick, and with everybody's help in that area and taking these three Ws, as Rita likes to say, in mind, hopefully, our community will stay safe and healthy, and our schools will be able to operate. So I really thank everyone for their support in this area because, obviously, this health crisis that we're working through is really what has been driving the agenda the last several months, and we want to make sure that we keep that in the forefront of our minds, keep our staff, our community, our students as safe and healthy as they can be, so that we can continue to educate our students and hopefully, over time, educate them more and more and more closer to a normal scenario is obviously what we'd like to work toward. We're super excited. I'm really going to be thrilled to go to work tomorrow and see some of those big yellow boxes on wheels and see some students in buildings. I'm really looking forward to that, hoping that goes very well so that we can have more and more of that going forward into the future. So that's my last little slide here. I'm very excited for that. I know all of us are, and we're really looking forward to it. So thanks for your attention tonight, and stay safe.
Thank you, Mr. Mercurian. With that, we are up to superintendent's report. Mr. Mercurian?
Yes, so obviously, what I just shared was sort of the report for tonight to really, you know, ask for everyone's support and staying healthy, and for everyone's support in doing all the extra hoop jumping. I know that we're all kind of jumping through a lot of extra hoops to try to keep things safe, and different forms, and Zoom logins, and all of this learning curve that we've all had to deal with to try to make things work well. I certainly appreciate all the support in that regard. The one other thing I wanted to mention in superintendent report was a thank you to those parents that reached out to me really over the weekend with regard to what's an apparent error in the way that some of our elementary school parents received bus passes. I received several communications from parents alerting me to the fact that instead of getting just your own bus pass information, you got your own bus pass information plus many other elementary students' bus pass information. So obviously, that's an error that we are disappointed about, but we are working as quickly as we can to figure out exactly what caused that error so that it doesn't happen again. I know that several of our IT folks, both internally in Burners Township, as well as the IT staff that are working for the Delaware Valley Regional High School District, which is our transportation coordinator this year, is working with our IT staff and also our own local transportation coordinator to try to sort through, sort out what happened and communicate what exactly that was to parents. But in the meantime, we do have our bus passes issued. Parents should have received them, and if you didn't, as I mentioned in my communication this past Friday, please check your SPAM because the bus passes were issued from a new source. They were issued from the Delaware Valley Regional High School District, and they are a transportation services coordinator, and that's why you're seeing that in the email. The subject of the email should make it clear that this is intended for a target audience of Burners Township parents receiving a bus pass. So it's just a little bit of a change. In the past, we used to use the Somerset County Educational Services Commission to coordinate transportation for us. So instead of seeing that on the bus passes, you should be seeing Delaware Valley Regional High School District because they are our coordinated transportation service provider for this year. So we apologize for that mistake. It seems to be limited to some of our elementary families that received the errant emails. I would ask that if you did receive an errant email that contained information besides just your own, to please delete that information, delete that email, obviously saving what you need for yourself, and deleting the remainder. And as I mentioned, we should be able to get a communication out tomorrow with some explanation about what it was so that we don't have this happen again. So apologize for that. We thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Mercurian. So next, we have public comment on agenda items. So with respect, I ask everyone one more time, please include your first and last name and your address. Ms. Fox?
Hello, everyone. So the first email is from Carl Cambria, 60 Gultra Drive. "Thank you for everything you have been doing throughout this pandemic. You all should be congratulated for getting in-person instruction back up and running. Thank you. Now that we are back in the building, I would just like to hear the plan for when, if positive cases arise. Can you please go over the specific circumstances when a class, school, and district will return to all remote based on a positive COVID test of a staff member or student who is reporting to a school building? How many positive cases does it take? And what happens each time the district finds out about a positive test? Will all district parents be notified? Only those in the school? Only those in the classroom? Or no parents? And what is the initial plan when there is one case? Will the classroom, school, district, or district return to all remote until tracing is complete? Where is this plan written so we can see it? Thanks again." Nicole Riley, 35, Tall Tiver Lane. Dear BOE... After, hold on. Is that the right one? Nicole, yeah, that's the right one. "After consoling my sobbing second-grade son this morning after a computer glitch, as well as pressure to complete work, I more than realize this virtual hybrid learning is not working for him, and I believe he is among the many that it is not working for. This learning environment for students, teachers, and parents is not sustainable for very long. We need a 100% back-in-school plan for those who want it. We cannot sit idle while we wait for the governor to say it's okay to plan. We need to form a task force of qualified individuals who can make this happen for us. The Pediatric Society recommends return to school for emotional well-being, electronic addiction, social stagnation, as well as grade drain. We have a moral responsibility to make a plan to get our students back in school full-time. I think schools are first responders. We must find a way. We cannot forfeit our children's future. Thank you." Colleen DGM Batista, 3005 Lyons Road. "Please discuss the plan and metrics needed to get these kids back to school five days a week. This way of learning is not sustainable for our young children, and it is your job to ensure we, as a district, are prepared and ready and not behind again." Amanda Yenuklis Kuserka, 20, Old Coach Road. Dear BOE members, last week I received bus passes for WHAMs and RHS. I was concerned about the pickup times, which are about 30 minutes later for WHAMs than they have been the past three years. We appear to be using a new bus company this year. I may have missed discussion of the change in bus companies. What has the BOE done to vet the accuracy of the bus routes and pickup times provided in light of the change in companies? Allison Galusha, 80, Shannon Hill Road. "As we near October 1st, I think it is important to take stock of the current situation and focus on getting these kids back in school full-time. I believe I can speak for most parents in Burners Township when I ask the following two things. One, please stop saying that we are all in this together. We are not all in this together, and it comes across extremely condescending. Two, please stop patting each other on your backs for all of your hard work. Our kids may or may not be going back to school next week for a total of two half-days. We may or may not have the resources as a town to give our kids the most bare bones of education. This is nothing to be proud of. We are a community in dire need of our school leaders to act like leaders and do what is best for the kids. The focus on virtual schooling needs to be shifted to in-person education five days a week. We are not going to give in to virtual education as a solution. We need to refocus on getting back to in-person education for our children. Please take a moment to listen to these comments from children and their parents over the past couple of weeks. A child is suffering from eye problems as a result of virtual school and from the repetitive strain of staring at a computer. One straight A student says that they feel, quote, "dead inside" after getting off the computer on Wednesdays. The student says that their love of learning is lost. Several students have complained that when there is a virtual class, the teachers are showing videos instead of directly teaching the students. There is no actual teacher-to-student learning taking place. The teacher is only there to assign work and go over assignments. One mom's heart is breaking for her child. Her child is crying because of the frustration with the technical glitches and accidentally erasing an assignment that took the child a long time to complete. The anxiety of the technology failing our children is overwhelming. Reports of our kids stress-eating and crying throughout the day multiple times a day. Zoom links that don't work causing students to melt down and give up. Children feeling isolated and alone. Kids overwhelmed by multiple emails, websites, school tools, et cetera, and not able to focus on learning. Our kids questioning why wealthy kids in private school are in-school learning and they are not. Kids confused as to why our schools do not have a plan in place to get them back to school full-time when other schools do. Our administration is failing our kids and community. Do not say we need to wait for the state to tell us what to do. You are the ones that need to think outside of the box and come up with a plan. You were paid to educate our children. You're paid to develop and update policies and plans and then to implement them. Our kids deserve better than what they are getting. Thank you for listening." Jennifer Potenta, 21, Pitney Court. "What is the plan and associated milestones for getting these kids back to school five days a week? Please share the action plan, key metrics, and dates." Peter Edelson, 12 Fairview Drive, East. "Hello, and thank you to all putting in the hard work during this incredibly unique shared experience we are all adapting to on a daily basis. This is just a simple request from a parent with five children in the school system. I do not want to stifle or hinder the creativity of any individual teacher or faculty communications to our children in any way. In fact, I applaud it. If you cannot imagine the volume of emails we receive on a daily basis from all the school messages, let me tell you, it can inundate any parent's inbox on any given day. Additionally, with children who are getting older and thus having the same teachers as their older siblings once had, it has become very difficult to keep track of what teacher and what class applies to each of our kids. I'd like to suggest the district adopt some kind of convention for outgoing communications of a certain type, such as anything a teacher sends to or about one of their classes or students. For example, something like this, without, with or without period X. Grade eight, period five, Earth Science teacher name. Grade five, math instructional support teacher name. Grade 10, period six, chemistry teacher name. Grade nine, conceptual biology teacher name. All the other personalization can go in the body of the email and be as creative and individually subjective to each teacher's heart's content. I have discussed this with some of their parents who think this would help them as well. Some teachers are pretty darned close to this already. The difficulty is how many or not. Thank you again for considering my proposal, and thank you again for any and all of your efforts on behalf of the community." efforts on behalf of the community. Vanessa Lombardo, 15 Joanna Court. Dear Mr. Markarian and BOE members, now that the students are returning to school this week and next for the hybrid model, has planning begun for students to go back to in-school education five days a week? Our district needs to have a plan ready to send the students back to school five days a week, regardless if the district is waiting on guidance from the governor or the NJDOE. Our students deserve better. Mr. Markarian, please fight for our students. Jennifer Cuda, 151 Thackeray Drive. It is my understanding that the children that are in cohorts is a trial to see how we can get kids back to school five days a week safely. What is the district's timeline in making this happen? How long do you have to show safety within the cohort model to start more days in school? How are you measuring safety? And what are the metrics you are using to open schools to five days a week? Are these metrics similar to neighboring districts that are already live five days a week? Thank you. Elizabeth Savannah, 11 Archgate Road. Good evening. Can you please share your plans for five days a week return to instruction? Many schools have been able to do this, so I would like to know why we are delayed and what your plan is to open fully. I'm seeing the negative impact remote learning is having on my three kids and feel it is unrealistic to expect kids to learn this way for the entire school year. Barbara Geary, 66 Dryden Road. Can you please address extra specials at the elementary schools? With the amount of computer Zoom times, how do you believe this is an efficient and effective use of time for all? For the hybrid students, they will lose precious in-person time with their teacher for it to only be replaced by another Zoom class while sitting inside the school building. This has rotated through my daughter's schedule twice, and what was done or discussed was not curriculum-related. Many other districts have amended their district calendars with the removal of the November Teacher Convention days to compensate for other missed days or adding these days to another holiday. The thought process is that if people are exposed to COVID-19 at a holiday celebration, this will hopefully give the person more days for the symptoms to surface and not expose a class or school. Many districts are going 100% virtual the week after the winter and spring break for the same reason. The planned virtual days versus a sudden change to the hybrid schedule is what we need. Can the BOE put together a task force to plan for a 100% back-in-school plan versus the hybrid model? Please reach out to the community to get members whose input from their professional backgrounds could be invaluable. I believe the BT Connect Communication Council was utilized in the summer, but won't it be prudent to form a task force whose expertise can be utilized now? We do not need to wait for the governor to say it's okay to plan. He is quoted as saying, quote, "You're on your own to figure this out. The mental health of our children is at risk, as is the well-being of our teachers. Please be proactive." Pam Malary, 79, Fieldstone Drive. Has there been any recent analysis of the data security of the systems that we are relying on for distance learning? Google Classroom, Zoom, and the databases where our students' data is being stored? Have there been any data security concerns or breaches in the last two years involving student data in our district? With all logins relying on student IDs, what effort is being made to keep secure the student IDs of each student? Are there unique passwords that students' parents can be used as passwords instead of student IDs? Catherine Piper, 29, Crossroad. I am emailing to stress that you guys need to come up with a plan to get these kids back in school full-time Monday through Friday for full days. There is no reason that you can't figure out how to handle the kids for full days when other institutions, private and Catholic, have had no problem figuring out how to handle a return to in-person instruction. My family is one of the largest taxpayers in town between the quarry golf course and multiple residences, and all I need is my one first grader in a classroom to learn how to read and write. But at the moment, I have had to spend extra funds to ensure there is an adult sitting next to him managing his Zoom schedule for the day when we pay higher taxes to live in this town for you guys to handle our children. Let's get it done. This is ridiculous. Kim Famula, 226 Lyons Road. I'm writing, as I have heard, we have no current plan for in-person five-days-a-week schooling. Why would we not have a plan in place for this? Are we not anticipating this will happen this school year? In addition, of course, to the education issue, the health and well-being of our children are suffering as they continue to miss school. I also continue to be disappointed with the middle school. My elementary school child works harder and longer hours than the middle schooler. Susan Ursino, 12, Chaucer Court. When a teacher or administrator is granted FFCRA, are they still permitted to supervise or coach in-person during their leave of absence? Smida Saraswat, 63, Vanderweer Drive. What will be the protocol if one of the kids is diagnosed with COVID at school? How will the classes continue in such situations? Nancy Pointant, 191 Woods End. The presentation indicates that students are encouraged to bring snacks and a water bottle. Since lunch will only occur during one of the two in-person days, is it now permissible for students to eat during the class on the other day? Ripa Carta, 58, Independence Drive. Once again, thank you to the members of this BOE for their nonstop, tireless efforts to make necessary adjustments while prioritizing the student's safety. Teachers have been doing a good job thus far in accommodating the virtual model. Can we find out prior to October 1st if our students' teacher will be teaching remotely or in the classroom once school opens? Will teachers in the classroom be teaching in-person students as well as virtual students from their device at their desks? Or will it be live instruction for the in-person students in the classroom? For teachers who have chosen to virtually teach, will they teach in-person students while a substitute teacher is in the classroom? Thank you all. We appreciate your efforts. Smida Saraswat, 63, Vanderweer Drive. What will be the school protocol? I think this is the same question. If one of the kids is diagnosed with COVID at school, how will classes continue? Stephanie Green, 52, Winding Lane. What is the plan for schools to get back to a five-day schedule? This is imperative for our children's education. Dave Anderson, 31, Dryden Road. What is the plan to make up for the curriculum that is being missed since each class is only meeting three times a week? When will math tests be conducted? What is being done to reassess the 137 now first graders who are below the national 40th percentile on the February dibbles? Thank you. Nella Oliviera, 83, Galloping Hill Road. Good evening, BOE members. Can you please explain how the students are receiving the necessary amount of instruction time as pre-COVID when previously they had 200 minutes of instruction time per week per subject? Now they have 130 minutes instruction time per week. How can they get the same amount of material covered with nearly half of the instruction time? Hi, Mr. Markarian and Board of Education. My name is Eric Cuda. I live at 151 Thackeray Drive. I have twin boys in second grade at Cedar Hill. I wanted to reach out to you today about the reopening of the district. I have several concerns that I would like to have addressed. Before listing my concerns, I do want to make it very clear that the teachers I have experienced are doing an amazing job, given the support I see them getting. Communication to parents. A communication went out this past week from the bus company that listed out all children, addresses, their bus routes, pickup drop-off times, and student IDs for Cedar Hill. These numbers are used as passwords and for almost all of their access... Pardon me? Inside and outside of school. It is concerning that this information went out, and I have not seen any emails from the district addressing this or how it will be protected moving forward. Lack of time to obtain materials for hybrid class starting Tuesday. If you don't have these materials at home, we were only given a few days to acquire. As you have noted on prior communications about the supply chain issues the district faces, the lack of adequate time to prepare the necessary materials is not acceptable considering we have had months to plan reentry. This seems to be a consistent issue as we were only notified the week prior to school opening that it was moved to virtual till October 1st. Screen time. The amount of time the children are in front of a screen is completely unacceptable. This much screen time at their age is completely inappropriate, especially in homes that try to limit TV-computer devices. Seven-year-olds should not be attending to a computer screen four-plus hours a day, let alone be required to navigate several platforms the manner they are being asked to. These young children should be back in school five days a week immediately. Specials. I understand how important specials are to developing children. Given the current approach, I believe specials should be optional, especially in elementary school. It is yet again another contributor to screen time fatigue and for some working parents proves to be another challenge to support young children, doing the absolute best they can. In my case, my children both have IPs and have motor planning issues, so many of the specials require an adult to assist them through the whole time, which we do not have the capacity to continue to do. Finally, I have attended the school board meetings bimonthly since this pandemic has occurred. I do notice many questions are read but not are addressed. I hear a lot of generalization that in many cases does not address parent concerns. I hope this will change moving forward. I would like to hear how these concerns will be addressed, and I must reiterate, the children need to be back in school full-time immediately. The risk to the children is almost zero. Erin Woin Rowan, 83, Church Street. Good evening. My son is in the first grade at Liberty Corner. Going into the school year, I wrote a letter to the superintendent with many questions. I appreciated the detailed answers that I was provided and decided that I would see how everything went and give everyone the benefit of the doubt that there was a plan in place and that while things might not go perfect, they would go well, all things considered. At this point, though, my hopes are considerably dashed. I find that schedules and breaks are inconsistent. Some days my son is in class for 20 minutes at a time, and some days it is closer to 30, 35. Breaks can range from 10 minutes to 45 minutes to an hour. During the breaks, students are told to do seesaw work. I am unable to help my son because I am working. We have been doing the seesaw assignments and homework late at night now when he should be preparing for bed. He gets very upset and anxious when I cannot help him during the day and is concerned that everyone else is doing their work but him. What he ends up doing majority of the time is watching TV in between his classes and going to bed late. The assignments on seesaw are fun. My son enjoys doing them, but they are more like games or drawing stick figures with his finger on a touchscreen rather than actual deep learning. I'm concerned how the assignments will be assessed and true learning and mastery will be measured. Will the board please clearly articulate how the virtual classroom instruction meets the state requirements for actual instruction? From what I have observed, I am deeply concerned that at the lower grammar school level, it does not even come close to the required minimum. The district needs to come up with a plan for returning the students to school for five days per week. This is not a wait-and-see-how-it-go situation. Action plans must be put into place, or we will be caught on our heels again and the kids will suffer. Heather Watson Kramer, 84, Liberty Corner Road. Dear Mr. Markarian and Board of Education members, thank you so much for everything you are doing for our students. I know how hard you have and continue to work to get our students back into, sorry, the buildings in a safe manner. Our children can't wait to walk into the school buildings on October 1st. I am emailing today to ask all of the board members that have ever driven their children to school in Burners Township to please speak up and explain to the DelVal Transportation Company and the BOE Transportation Director how bad the traffic is in front of William Mannan and Ridge High School in the morning. I've tried to email and speak to them both about my concerns, but they keep giving me excuse after excuse of why the pickup times are okay. I understand that the students don't need to go to their lockers at the moment, but that doesn't mean they should be late. I understand that only 50% of the school will be going in at one time, but I also know that lots of parents are not comfortable with the buses and that they will be driving their students, which will cause even more traffic and delays. I understand that you don't want the students congregating before school, but that doesn't mean they should be sprinting across the building to get to their first class on time. I get that my child will be the last pickup and that you will be going directly to the building from here. I, too, go directly to the school from my house in the morning, and I can tell you that these pickup times are not going to work. I know from the 39 years that I have lived in this town and the 12 years of driving my children to school, that morning school traffic is a nightmare. You cannot pick up a Ridge High School student that lives on the other side of Burners Township at 7:14 a.m. and expect that child to get to class on time when it takes me 14 minutes in the middle of the day with no traffic to get to Ridge. You cannot pick up William Mannan students at 7:25 a.m. and think that the bus will make it down Quincy before home room at 7:45. These students are only going to be in-person with their first and fifth-period teachers once a week. I do not want them being late because the bus company doesn't understand what traffic is like around our schools. Their tardiness may be excused due to the bus being late, but they are still responsible for the lesson and work that they missed. Please help me get the bus pickup times fixed before all of the bus students are late for Paul Maroc, 58, Independence Drive. Good evening. Thank you to the BOE and teachers for your efforts. What is the process to change a hybrid student to 100% virtual prior to October 1st due to unforeseen circumstances? We know that changes are permitted at the end of the marking period, but this will not work for many parents who need to make changes now. We anticipate your... We appreciate your anticipated response. And that was the last comment.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Mr. Markarian, would you like to try to tackle some of those?
So several people asked about specific numbers of cases or number of cases in a certain environment and how would that impact schools. Obviously, it's a very timely question, given that at the same time, many folks were also asking about trying to bring in all kids full-time. We're seeing things around us that, you know, are very interesting when it comes to this sort of conflict between situations that arise causing a school to close for a period of time versus a desire to have all the students in for full days. These two issues seem to be at odds as we look around some of our neighboring towns where schools have had to close for various situations. And frankly, there's not a particular formula. I did share with the community on a couple of different occasions, the August 13th memo issued by the New Jersey Department of Health that tries to give families, school districts, some sense of what might possibly happen with various scenarios as part of the publication. But they say right at the top of those scenarios that when you're working with your local health department on these situations of positive cases, whether they be staff members or students or both, each of these cases' circumstances are really contingent on the specific circumstances of that case. So it's really difficult to say if this, then that. What we can say is that we do have a policy that indicates that we'll work with the health department to support their contact tracing, and when we do that, they'll make recommendations as far as what is appropriate for the public health of the community, right? They are our local public health agency, and when it comes to questions of public health, we are going to be relying on their guidance depending on the specifics of a given circumstance. So it's unfortunate, but I really can't give an exact answer of if then, except to say that if we are aware of a positive case, then we are going to work with the local health department. Again, many folks questioned about getting back in school full-time. And this question has, of course, arisen multiple times. As I mentioned, we're trying to strike a balance between bringing kids back to school and not having to close schools because we run into a situation with poor health. And I think that what we're looking for is to get kids back in school and to start to see some data behind us in terms of success and not having any illness that makes us feel confident that it is safe to bring more students back to school for a longer period of time. And again, looking at that data and at that time period, we will be consulting with the local health officials to talk about the trends in the data in the town and what's going on in our schools to try to get an idea of when perhaps it might be appropriate to increase the amount of time or the numbers of students in school at the same time. So I know that that's not a particularly satisfying answer, but it is honest in terms of what I think we need to see happen before we start having detailed... what I think we need to see happen before we start having detailed conversations about when a change would be made. We're, we're just trying to get the groups of students back into school right now and have a pattern of success where we don't need to close like some of our neighbors have. And, and when we see that, I, I think that, you know, we'll start to feel as though it's safe to have a conversation about looking at a date when we might be able to do more. I appreciate a, a lot of the items that people shared are associated with challenges that we have in terms of working at home in the virtual setting. It can be overwhelming at times and there are challenges with technology. I, I appreciated the suggestion about an email convention. There might be something that we can do with that in terms of what is included in the subject heading of the email. I saw Ms. Fox nodding, so I think she liked that idea also. Let's see what we can do with that. I think there's a, Ms. Fox and I talked about this concept of an extra special. Did you think that was somewhat of a misnomer in terms of the schedule? Could you explain that to Fox?
When we're in school, students are in the special daily for fifty minutes. Due to the, you know, configuration of the elementary schedule and the time slot being eight forty-five to one PM, you know, and the emphasis being on getting the reading, writing and mathematics blocks, you know, in place, that really left thirty minutes for their special. So the, um, the schedule now includes, they called it an extra special slot in the afternoon, but where students will receive one extra special per week in the afternoon slot for thirty minutes. Brings us closer to some of the, the time slot that the specials get, you know, when we're in school. But it also will take a number of weeks for each student to complete a rotation of all of the specials and get that extra slot from each one of the specials, art, music, to phys ed periods and tech and media. So it's not an extra special in the sense that we're not just adding it on and making it optional. It is part of the curriculum. It is part of meeting the, the standards, you know, which there are standards that drive the special areas of instruction. And we were really focused on, on bringing that back in a way that we really didn't emphasize or weren't able to emphasize as much when we were remote fully in the spring.
Right. So it doesn't really represent extra time over what would normally happen with specials. In fact, it's still less time than they would normally have with specials.
Correct.
It's, it's, um, the word extra is really related to a time slot in a, in a, in a schedule more so that it is on top of the norm.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Syatt, there was a question about FF-CRA. You want to jump in on that one?
Sure, yeah. So, you know, FF-CRA is, is part of the Emergency Family Leave Act and Family Paid Sick Leave Act. And so when staff historically have taken a leave, they're not able to work in any capacity for the Board of Education because they are on leave. So that would hold true for the FF-CRA because that's been our past practice.
Okay. Thank you. The, some other questions came up related to curriculum and instruction relative to instructional time, map testing, learning and mastery. I know we talked about map testing at curriculum. I think that might be part of our curriculum committee report. Obviously instructional time is not what it was relative to being in school on a regular basis. And that's a function of our schedule designed to try to have an opportunity to do social distancing. And, and, you know, it's difficult to have both of them at the same time. I appreciate the concerns about screen time. It's something that we've talked about and you get a, a lot of range of opinion on that issue. Some are looking for more screen time. Some are looking for less. The bus schedules. I saw the, the emails about the bus schedules with respect to the times being too late. We, we, as, as you, as the public commenter noted, we do have a new transportation provider that was talked about multiple times over the course of the spring as we worked out new agreements. It is their first pass in working with our district. However, we do have a situation as, as was noted that in terms of our buses themselves, they are currently only going to be busing a fraction of the number of students that they would normally bus. We have the same number of routes planned so that ultimately we have all the seats necessary if at some point we were fully back on schedule and everyone started riding the buses, we have to have the seats. Given that we have roughly a third of our students on a hundred percent virtual program, that leaves about two-thirds of our students still reporting to school in person. And of those two-thirds, roughly half of that two-thirds will be A-day cohort, B-day cohort. So we do anticipate that that should shorten the overall route times. How it, how well it gels with the traffic patterns, obviously, we'll see that quite soon. We are going to see some elementary school bus routes running tomorrow on Tuesday, the twenty-second of September, right? So on that date, we can take a look at how those elementary buses do. Given that all of the routes are going to be running, even though we're only picking up K-one-two students, we are going to be running all the elementary routes in order to do that. And so that'll give us a little bit of a barometer check on, on how the timing of the routes went. And I've asked the, the principals to keep a close eye on that since this issue was raised and give us some feedback. And if necessary, if there's an adjustment that needs to be made, it's, it's not that difficult to do an across-the-board adjustment if you need to say to everyone, okay, we're backing up pickup times by ten or fifteen minutes in order to make things work. If that becomes necessary, obviously, we can do that. And as I mentioned, hopefully tomorrow will give us some indicator as buses start to roll for some of our regular routes. A question came up with respect to hybrid to virtual. There is a, a descriptor for this that is in our policy. It describes how parents can make application to the principal of the school in order to go from a hybrid to virtual. Similarly, it provides a process for how folks can request to go from virtual to hybrid. Obviously, students going from virtual to hybrid. It's a little bit more impactful in terms of our in-school schedules and, and teaching staff. So we are looking to make any of those adjustments at the beginning of the marking period or the beginning of the trimester. And our policy does require that parents that want to make that switch from virtual to hybrid give us three weeks lead time, meaning there's a deadline three weeks prior to the end of a marking period, the start of the next marking period of trimester. Folks would need to give us that information so we could plan accordingly. And we did talk about this issue today in another meeting and decided that we would wait until October. Our next board meeting is October fifth to kind of review dates, go over the end of marking period dates, go over the trimester dates and tie that to some deadlines for parents. In the event that they wanted to make a, a switch, they would, they would see that information clearly and understand when they needed to make those requests by. Okay, that's all I had in my notes.
And that's the question about lunch. Somebody was asking about lunch periods. I, I might have missed your answer.
Oh, the lunch periods? Right. So in terms of snacks and water, I think the, the question came up. So I, the principals are planning opportunities for the students, in particular at the elementary school, to get breaks for snack time and a time to, to drink, obviously. That's going to involve taking off the mask. And I would look to building principles for guidance on specifics of how they're going to handle that. I don't know if you had any, any information that you wanted to share on that.
I just wanted to make sure, because it says lunch on the schedule at the high school. It's not a lunch period. Any, you know, while we're hybrid, it, it is, so it's not a lunch period where there will be eating. I thought that might be what the confusion was.
Right, right. Because they did, they did keep lunch as a period on the schedule and they were repurposing that time for other things. You know, whether or not students can find an opportunity to get to a place to get outside or to have a designated opportunity to go out and eat something. I'm, I'm going to let Dr. Lazovic give parents feedback on that one.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Markary.
I'm sorry, there was, there was one other one. I ran out of space on the one piece of paper. I started writing over here. I apologize. The, the question was about NJE convention and, and planned virtual days and after vacation. It's a really interesting question. I, I was actually talking to my wife about it over the weekend. We were just brainstorming because of the, the very interesting scenario we have of, of holidays and travel and the, the current daily COVID screening form that we're, we're employing. It specifically asks questions about travel and travel out of state. And when you think about Thanksgiving and some of the other holidays that we typically have throughout the winter, it does represent an interesting conundrum for families that may choose to travel to a state that involves a quarantine period upon return, especially if that quarantine period extended a week or, or more into school classes. So the suggestion of some type of virtual program or otherwise was interesting and, and I don't have a solution, but I, I do recognize the concern because I could certainly understand that people may want to travel. And if they are traveling, they may well need to quarantine when they return. So it's, it's going to be a challenge for us to work through like everything else this year. Something for all of us to think about a little bit. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Markary. So our next item is the approval of minutes. If I could have a motion, please. Mrs. White and Mr. Salmon. And Mr. McLaughlin, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Beckman?
Yes.
Ms. Schaper?
Yes.
Mr. Salmon?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Richmond?
Yes.
Mrs. Corn?
Yes.
Mrs. Woldridge?
Yes.
Mrs. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Madam President?
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. So with that, we're up to the Finance Committee report. Mr. Salmon?
Finance met on Wednesday. The first item up for discussion was the renovation to the Wham! Science Labs. Mr. Katana from Spiesel Architects, the district architect, came in and to the Zoom and gave a, an update. Mr. Katana said the drawings and specs have been approved by the DOE. However, prior to going out to bid, Mr. McLaughlin explained that we need to complete an environmental survey and add an abatement portion to the bid specification. The abatement is for the floor tile and glued-together furniture, for example, lab tables. In view of the pandemic, we're also going to add language regarding daily health screenings and background checks to the bid specification. Mr. McLaughlin said the build package will go out by the end of October or early November. The second item for discussion was the, um, the Ridge High School sanitary line inspection that is being done by Mr. Katana from Spiesel Architects, an engineering firm. As previously reported, the sanitary lines leading from the cafeteria in the nineteen sixty-two wing of Ridge High School were inspected with fiber optic cameras and it was discovered that some pipes had completely eroded on the bottom. The original recommended path forward was to dig pits at locations in the school which would receive outflow from new sanitary lines and use ejector pumps to pump the outflow through new overhead piping out of the building. Since the last meeting, the engineering firm has re-reviewed the fiber optic images and examined where the pits would have to be located and how the overhead piping would have to be run. It was determined that the pit ejector pump solution should not be our first option because we, the district would need a waiver from the town for the ejector pumps. And obviously, a broken overhead pipe of outflow would be a, a difficult situation to manage. As shown on, so Mr. Katana went through the areas of the sanitary lines that were intact and could be, uh, continue to be used, but there is a portion that needs to be replaced. So Mr. Katana outlined the process for replacing that section, which is between the cafeteria and the, the old gym hallway there. So, um, the next step is that there's going to be running new line from that section out underneath the space between immediately north of the wood shop and then out the side to the sewage system right behind the new gym. Mr. Katana is commissioning a radar sweep to identify any utility lines in the outdoor area until the repair is complete. The restrooms in the two-hundred wing, the three-hundred wing, the guidance suites, the cafeteria and the locker rooms near the old gym will not be in operation. In addition to the aforementioned areas of the sanitary line, there was some portion that could not be imaged with the fiber optic camera, but Mr. Perrin, the contract architect for the district, and Mr. Marino, district facility matters have been tasked to try to find an entry point to access the pipe for imaging. Upon completion of that survey and subject to the architectural and consulting engineering firm's review, additional repairs may need to be made to that point. There's only minimal impact for those lines because they only surface one bathroom and one sink. There's, as far as we have been told by Mr. Katana, there's no impact on opening schools that has to do with this project. So just the fact that the two-hundred wing, three-hundred wing bathrooms and locker rooms and cafeteria will not be able to be used won't impact the school opening. The next item was an update on hygiene, uh, next update was a bringing on a new director of, Assistant Director of Facilities. Mr. McLaughlin asked that the, the committee support the hiring of John Perrin as the Assistant Director of Facilities. Mr. Perrin is an architect that has been working for the district on a consulting basis for several years. Mr. Perrin worked on many of the recent construction projects and is expected that the need for his expertise will continue for the foreseeable future. The next item was the update on hygiene project, project installation. This is an update on the reports that have been given over the past few months about the upgrades to our bathroom facilities for hands-free sinks, hands-free paper towel dispensers and hands-free soap dispensers. Four plus month, four plus months ago, the Aramark Facilities Manager was instructed to count the hands-on faucets, paper towel dispensers and soap dispensers in all bathrooms in the district. As previously reported, the Aramark Facilities Manager confirmed that all installations had been completed. In comparing their quantities requested and ordered by Aramark to the final installation reports, it was determined that there was a substantial number of leftover items that had not been installed. This led to confirmation that the Aramark Facilities, that Aramark failed to include in their count of all bathrooms in the district, all staff bathrooms and classroom bathrooms, those for pre-K classrooms and kindergarten classrooms in the count of all bathrooms in the district. So Mr. McLaughlin is now working with Aramark and outside vendors, plumbers and electricians to get these upgrades installed as soon as possible. There were twenty-six, for the touchless faucets, there were twenty-six faucets that were for classroom bathrooms that were going to be installed. That was scheduled to be completed by today. The automatic paper towel dispensers, there were two-hundred ordered, but Aramark only installed eighty-seven. So we are working with Aramark and additional Aramark personnel and outside electricians to come in and complete that installation. And of the hundred and fifty automatic soap dispensers, a hundred and forty-seven were installed, but because of the Aramark undercount, we need an additional seventy-five that have been ordered and a delivery is expected this week. In addition to the above issues, as Mr. Syatt noted in his report during the presentation, they, we had asked Aramark in July to provide an additional four custodial staff. Aramark has yet to fill those vacancies, but we found out they just filled one of them. Mr. McLaughlin will continue to press Aramark to fill these, fill these positions. Regarding the upgraded hygiene products, the paper towel dispensers, the sinks, the faucets and the soap dispensers, all bathrooms have these items. So paper towels and faucets, obviously. obviously. So not, none of these upgrades, remaining installations will prevent the, the school from opening on time on October 1st and, and tomorrow for the, the young kids. The last item up for discussion was the state extraordinary aid that is due to come out in this month. It's anticipated that early next month after the legislature and governor, governor approve at fiscal year budget by September 30th, we'll have the numbers for state categorical and extraordinary aid. As far as the agenda items on the agenda for tonight, one through three are standing items. Number four is professional development required by contract and state licensing requirements. Five through 10 are student services and evaluation and number 11 authorized is the contract with Spiesel and CMM Engineering to do the sanitary line renovation design and bid specification preparation work. There is an addendum, which is approval of educational interpretive services for students. That's it.
So can we have, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Salmon? No questions.
I don't have a question.
Mrs. Corn, I'm sorry.
I, I, I'm going to motion before we start the discussion.
That's what I was going to do, John. Thank you. So can we just have a motion and then we'll go to questions? Mrs. Corn and Mrs. Woldridge? And now Mrs. Corn's question.
So Tim, and so I'm just on make it clear that this is not going to affect opening. We have plenty of soap. We have, the taps work. We are going hopefully above and beyond by doing the automatic stuff, but working now to get them all installed, but we don't actually have to have them in order to open the school.
No, all the facilities, except for the ones that I mentioned with, with regard to the Ridge sanitary line issue, the 200 wing, 300, all the bathrooms are fully operational. They all have soap. They all have paper towels. They all have hand, or the ones that have hand dryers have hand dryers, but they all are work, in working order. Most of them have the upgrades that, that we were referring to, but because of the Aramark undercount, some of them don't. But for those that don't, they will have the necessary hygiene products in them until the upgrades can be completed.
Okay. Just want to make sure that everyone's clear on that.
Yeah, so there's nothing that, in that project that would delay bringing students tomorrow or bringing in everybody on October 1st.
And thank you, Mr. Salmon. Any other questions for Mr. Salmon? Okay. Mr. McLaughlin, can we please have a roll call?
Mrs. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Woldridge?
Yes.
Mrs. Corn?
Yes.
Mrs. Richmond?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Salmon?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Beckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Madam President?
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Our next item is the Personnel Committee report. There are 16 items on the agenda tonight. If I could have a motion, please. Mr. Salmon and Mrs. White. The Personnel Committee met on Friday. The, the board just received the minutes this afternoon and gratefully, Mr. Salmon highlighted the one item that I intended to report on and Mr. Syatt covered some other items in his report earlier in the agenda. So, and the item I was going to highlight was the hiring of Mr. Perrin to fill the assistant facilities director role. So with that, Mr. McLaughlin, could we please, unless anyone has any questions, if we could please have a roll call?
I'm sorry, but was there a motion?
Yes. The motion, I'm sorry, the motion was first, it was Mr. Salmon and Mrs. White.
All right, thank you. Ms. Beckman?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Salmon?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Richmond?
Yes.
Mrs. Corn?
Yes.
Mrs. Woldridge?
Yes.
Mrs. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Madam President?
Thank you. Our next item is the Policy Committee report. Mrs. Corn?
Yes. I'll read them, I'll read the minutes first. Is that okay? Then you can do the whole thing. The Policy Committee, we met on September 14th and we discussed a couple of things in relation to the policy 1648, which is our restart and recovery plan. Mr. Markarian, and I think he reported on this the last meeting, wanted to confirm with Mrs. Zara Barra about that the waiting for like a prophylactic COVID test result was, is not a reason to bar anyone from school or school activities and have them quarantine. That mean like if you're going to see your grandma or something. The COVID-19 daily screening form is a criteria used to determine if you can be in school or involved in school activities. That was a discussion, I think. Mr. Markarian had talked about that and so did Mrs. Zara Barra the last time in the last meeting. The committee was, there's also a question about if we should revisit the school calendar given the unique situation we are in and if the online learning would change how we schedule our snow days. Like would it be possible to have virtual learning on snow days? We therefore eliminate the need to actually schedule our snow days in the calendar. Mr. Markarian informed the committee that the bill passed in April, A3904, which is the bill that let us count a virtual day as one of the 180 mandatory school days. It has very specific criteria regarding online learning. So it has to be a declared state of emergency or a declared public health emergency or a directive from a public health agency. And any of these three have to affect the school opening for three consecutive days in order to start online learning. Therefore, that would preclude us from, we would still need the snow days to cover those three days in order to even get to the virtual learning anyway. So the answer would be no, we still have to have snow days, which most people are surprised to hear. And also we are discussing attendance as it relates to kids that have chosen in-person learning but are forced to quarantine, that the quarantine doesn't negatively affect their schooling, but as they are able to switch to virtual during that mandated, that mandated quarantine period. But if a student's not feeling well today and they choose to stay home from school or not, there's too sick to be on with a virtual school, that would be counted as a sick day. Like virtual, if you're going into school and you don't feel good, you can't just switch to virtual because you're not going into school because you don't feel good. You're sick. It would just be a sick, a sick day. The committee also discussed are going back to in-person board meetings in October as our students will be back in school, ideally. So we discussed some executive orders that were issued regarding building capacity and, and stuff that, that the, the governor was, and the rules from New Jersey. So we, so we could use like the possibility using the big gym was discussed, but the acoustics are kind of poor in the gym. So that might not be perfect, but or using the pack where we can social distance on the stage, that would work better and maybe we can still live stream the live meeting. But like any color, public comment, public comment, we'd like to have made in person since we'll be there in person. So Mr. Markarian is going to consult with Mr. Krut to make sure this can actually happen. This can be mandated that we can go back and what the parameters would be for us to be having live meetings. The committee discussed policy 38, 3282 and 4282, which is the use of social networking sites for teaching staff members and support staff. And we're just, it basically states that there should be no inappropriate conduct and that there, that they are held to a higher standard and must not post anything detrimental to the district. There's also, you know, many First Amendment considerations that maybe take, are taken into account regarding limiting what people can post in their personal capacity. Okay. So we also have a whole bunch of policies for second reading. I'm just going to read what they are, if anyone has any questions about them, but we had talked about them a couple of meetings ago. So there's the restart and recovery plan, which is a policy 1648. There's the board member participation at board meetings using electronic devices, policy 0155.1. There's heat participation policy for student athlete safety, policy 2431.3. The student assessment policy, 2622. Policy and regulation 5111, which is eligibility of resident, non-resident students. There's policy and regulation 5200, which is attendance. Policy and regulation 5320, which is immunization. Policy and regulation 5330.04, which is administering of opioid antidote. There's the policy and regulation 5610, policy 5620, which is suspension and expulsion and procedures. There's policy and regulation 8320, which is personnel records. And that's it. Our next meeting would be on October 12th and if anyone has any questions.
I see Mr. Krut has something he'd like to share.
Not sure whether you got the motion yet or not on this one.
Not yet. We didn't.
That's why I thought that before the questions.
Can we please have a motion? Mrs. White and Mrs. Corn? And any questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Mrs. Corn. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Beckman?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Salmon?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Mrs. White, you are muted.
Yes.
Mrs. Richmond?
Yes.
Mrs. Corn?
Yes.
Mrs. Woldridge?
Yes.
Mrs. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Madam President?
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Our next item is the Curriculum Committee report. Mrs. Richmond?
The curriculum minutes went out last week for August and July and after having looked at them over the course of this week again, almost all of the information is so outdated at this point and would only serve as a point of confusion if I were to report it out and just, it would just mess up everything that has been really nicely presented over the last, the last three board meetings. So I am not going to do that, but we are meeting again on October 2nd and at that meeting I should be reporting out, or I'm sorry, at the next board meeting, which is October 5th, I'll be reporting out on the September minutes.
Thank you, Mrs. Richmond. And our next item is the Wellness Committee report. Mrs. White?
We are meeting on Thursday and I will report out at the next meeting.
Thank you. And with that, we're up to Liaison Committee reports. Does anyone have anything?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, I don't see anyone else. Nothing for the Ed Services Commission?
I can, I can let you know that on, on Wednesday, I went to the Somerset County Ed Services Commission meeting. They had a special meeting and approved the contracts for the bus drivers and also to approve an amendment in their contract.
Thank you, Mrs. Richmond. Okay, with that, we are up to public comment on non-agenda items. Ms. Fox, do we have any?
Do you have a few new additional comments? So the first is from Lori Alby, 96, Elder Lane. What is the status of the ACT testing at Ridge? Any update? Is this 100% going to happen? I think a lot of parents are banking on this happening. Just want to get a sense of how realistic it is. Thank you. Elaine D'Addario, 46, Dyckman Place. To the Bernard Township School District Community Voters, please don't vote for me, Elaine D'Addario, for the Bernard Township Board of Education position on the November 3rd, 3, 2020 ballot. I will not be accepting the position. Why, you ask? Well, I was never really sure I wanted the position. I had a knee jerk reaction when the Friday before the Monday deadline to submit for BOE, BOE candidates came to be and no one was running. I thought the seat can't go unfilled. These times are too important. I can't watch the community down, go down like that. Somebody needs to represent all stakeholders. At a juncture when I thought I would be pulling back and tapering off my many volunteer responsibilities, I felt the community was in need, so I stood up to the challenges I had done many times before. After much support from my family and friends, as well as those in the community, many kind words of encouragement and tons of thought and consideration, I realized that it is someone else's time to rise to the occasion. I am transitioning out of the district schools in a couple of years and it behooves those of you who will be here for the long haul to fill this extremely important role at such a pivotal time. Your students will be directly affected by decisions made in the next three years. I have every intention of remaining on the RHS PTO as the BOE representative through the 2020, 21 school year, so I won't be completely gone. I say all of this as the deadline to remove my name from the ballot has come and gone. I think of this as an opportunity for someone else to fill the role who can really make a positive and lasting difference in the lives of our students and educators at a time that calls for a new capable, outspoken, motivated, passionate, unifying energy which is desperately needed. So many communicate in writing, on Facebook and in the open comments at BOE meetings about how they feel about the BOE and its role in education, as well as the life of our students, and I would love to see them put their money where their mouths are in taking up the cause to be the difference they want to see. At the last BOE Zoom meeting, there was mention of a write-in candidate. Well, great idea. Now is the time to organize and get out the votes. If I am still elected to the BOE, I will not accept the position and the BOE will seek to fill the vacancy. If you ever thought about it, now is your time to shine. I wanted to be fair to the Bernard Township District School community and let everyone know of my decision now, not to accept the BOE position now, so that a pivot may occur that can benefit the Board of Education and in return our students and teachers. I also want to be fair to my last of four children and realistic enough to make decisions that put him and the rest of my family first as charity starts at home, and this is my time to cherish every moment with them. I have every faith in this wonderful community to rise to this occasion and come out on top. I'm not leaving the district, so although I will not be taking on this role, I will continue to be informed, stay involved and speak out against any injustices I see. I will never stop being a voice to champion the causes that move my heart and soul with an open mind and an eye on what is in the best interest of the teachers, students and families in our beloved school district, as well as our special town.
I'm sorry, the, oh, the end, almost the end?
This is it. I thank you for your consideration and your understanding and I, as I ask you, please do not vote for me on November 3rd, 2020. Stacy Molinari, 27, Franklin Drive. Dear Mr. Markarian and members of the BOE, I was disappointed in the WHAM's back-to-school night when more than one teacher decided to keep parents on a teacher-controlled mute and not allow any verbal questions or exchange with parents. I understand that very small students may not have proper Zoom etiquette and therefore need to employ this mute all technique. However, I hardly think this is appropriate for parents who have questions during back-to-school night. They did offer that questions can be submitted via chat, however, in the short time and not being able to find the text box fast enough, I was not able to use this, nor should it have been an expectation. Additionally, I learned from the PE teacher that there will be absolutely no equipment use in PE. These are the same group of students who will leave campus and head to their school-sponsored sports after school. It makes absolutely no sense that a team sport can be played with a ball in the school-sponsored sports, but not the same ball during PE with the same students. I realize that we are following NJSIAA rules for sports, however, I hope you can see that logically, this certainly makes no sense. Please do not misread my intent. I am definitely in support of the after-school sports and have an athlete in both the middle and high school, and they should continue for the best well-being of our students, social, mental and physical well-being. Both of these things I experienced at the back-to-school night made me think of the many, many more issues besides the ones covered in the last session, public comment, as well as prior BOE meetings that are resulting from this virtual environment. Though I appreciate the intent on trying the best to keep all safe, it is it has become clear some of the steps implemented are not even making sense anymore. I urge you to do what is reasonable to send kids back to school five full days a week. Dave Anderson, 31, Dryden Road. My question was not answered. What is being done to reassess the 137 now first graders who went, were below the national 40th percentile on the February Dibbles? Isn't the Board concerned that such a large number of these children were below the 40th percentile and not being reassessed? I would like to understand the detailed action plan to address this. Also, when is MAP testing? That's the last comment.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Mr. Markarian, is there anything you want to tackle there?
I know that we worked on the ACT some more. We did appoint someone at the last Board of Ed meeting. Ms. Fox sent a new agreement over to the Board Office today. So I think we are processing the application. And then we have to see what they say once we send it in to make sure that it's all copacetic before we make any official announcements. But we're still working on it, trying to make a fall administration possible. The last comment there, I don't know if you have any knowledge, Ms. Fox. I know we talked about the MAP testing. And certainly I could follow up with Ms. Vitale about the Dibbles testing. And if you, yeah, and we can follow up with Mr. Anderson on his question, but I don't have anything on the Dibbles testing that I can share right now. And I know we talked about the MAP testing and the chapters of trying to get it done virtually. I think.
We are, we have been in discussion for MAP testing, and we do plan to move forward with it. I think we have discussed the pros and cons of administering the assessment in school.
Right.
Limited amount of time we have in school.
Right.
Obviously, there would be some benefit to administering the assessment in school with the teacher there versus having the students take it on one of their at-home remote days where it wouldn't take away from the instruction time. But it's obviously not an environment where the teachers are there to assist the students and kind of oversee the testing. So we are currently making plans, you know, rostering the students for MAP testing to occur in October. But we certainly did push it back by a few weeks so that the students could acclimate back to school after such a long absence. So that is something we will be moving forward with in early October. And that would be grades two through eight. I'm sorry, three through eight in the fall, three through eight.
And I could follow up with Mrs. Vitale to see what I can figure out about where.
She has certainly shared with us that if you, you know, a few meetings, the results of that data and how that has been passed along to the current teachers and how that is kind of diagnostic data for the students, you know, now in their first grade class, as was mentioned, and so certainly, a lot of those students were in the summer intervention program as well. So that kind of goes together as well with being able to diagnose them in the fall and look to fill in the deficits that those assessments revealed.
Thank you. I don't have anything else.
I see Ms. Beckman has her hand up.
You didn't address the ACT, is it happening? That was a question from Lori Alby.
Yeah, no, I did talk about that. We're processing. Yep, we just have to process a form. There was one other contract. And then once we process that contract, I want, I want to make sure that they're going to deliver on their end in terms of materials and so on, and we get a commitment. That's mutual commitment before we make any announcement that for sure it's happening. A little more, a little more to do. Hopefully by, by the end of the month, I would like to think, we'll have an answer back from them.
I think so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Markarian. All right, so with that, we are up to Board Forum. Board Members? Mr. Salmon?
Thank you very much to everybody. As we, as my, my first grader gets ready to launch on her new school experience starting tomorrow. She did mention to a neighbor today, she said, "I'm going back to school tomorrow", and was kind of like bragging about it, but then she said, "But I have to wear a mask", so I was like, "Oh, man", but then she was like, "But I don't care about that", so I was like, "Oh, great". So I'm very appreciative of everybody getting to this point. I, you know, it was obviously a huge effort with a lot of changes along the way and bus companies and contracts and virtual school and hybrid schools. So I'm looking forward to getting this new, you know, start tomorrow for the younger kids and the pals and resource room students, and then everybody coming back on October 1st. So thank you very much to everybody, Kristen and Nick and Sean and Rod and all your teams for getting us here. And thank you very much to the community members who, you know, put in their names in the hat to be subs and aides, that's great. So, you know, thank you very much to everybody and good luck to the kids. And best of luck and best of, you know, one, the last thing is that, you know, parents have been asking, "How can we support the efforts here?" And I would say that really, it's going to come down to a lot of support to the teachers for this new type of schooling. So whatever you can do to support the staff and the teachers of your kids to help this process get up and get running and, you know, get better each and every day, just like we did with the virtual environment. So, you know, best of luck to everybody as we start on this new, new schooling model. And thank you.
Okay, wait, I don't know who is first, I'm sorry. I saw Mrs. McKeon's hand, but Mrs., whoever's ready. Robin?
Okay, um, yeah, I'd like to echo everything that Mr. Salmon just said. And also, just respond to a lot of the parents who are frustrated by the fact that we can't give a plan for going back more to school. Obviously, we all, you know, we share the frustration of wanting our kids to be back in school. And, you know, we see what's happening in different towns. I just heard of a couple more schools in Bergen County that had to shut down up by where my mother-in-law lives. You know, we want to, we want to, like Mr. Markarian said, you know, have some time where we can see that we're doing okay, bringing the kids back. We can't promise, you know, a date because I think that that's just not realistic until we see how things go for a couple more weeks in our town and around the state. And really ask everyone, just do everything that you can to keep our community as safe as we can. I mean, all of us that have older kids, it's challenging. Obviously, you know, everyone's tired of not being able to do their normal things. But if everyone can just stay strong and try to do the right thing and see that we can get through a couple more weeks with the kids going back and be doing well, then I think we can be having those conversations.
Thanks, Mrs. McKeon. Mrs. White?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, can you explain how the process works in terms of the election in light of Elaine DeDario's public comment?
Mr. Krut, do you have a moment for that?
Sure, it's, it's a little bit of, it's an interesting situation. I think that, as was DeDario mentioned in her, in her comment, there was, there's possibility of write-in candidates. So really, it will have to probably await the results of the election to determine which direction it goes. If a write-in candidate gets a sufficient number of votes to be elected, then that person, if they are otherwise qualified and accept, could be elected. On the other hand, if that does not happen, if for instance, you know, because of Ms. DeDario remains on the ballot, if she ends up being elected, then it would probably be a situation in which the Board of Education, it would be treated like a vacancy problem. And then in that situation, the Board of Education would get to select someone to fill the vacancy. But again, we won't know for sure till, till the results of the election.
Thank you, Mr. Krut. I believe Mrs. Corn had something too she wanted to add.
I just wanted to, you know, mirror what like Tim said, how, how great it is that, and I can't imagine how excited Tim is to get his first grader back at school. I am excited for you, but I'm also excited to get my older kids back at school, believe it or not. And the thought of them going back is so exciting to them because my daughter was like, she went to the peer leaders thing and she saw a couple of kids she hadn't seen. And she was like, "Oh, my God, it was so exciting to see them", like I wouldn't see them in my everyday life. And that's what it's all about, those social connections that really are getting cut because the kids can't see more kids that they wouldn't normally see unless they were in school. So, and I'm excited for those, the first day of school outfits to be fought over and even though I don't like, picked out. And, and it's just, it's really nice to see that we're, and I know you got, and I don't want to like, like the one woman said, we're patting ourselves on the back. I mean, really? I mean, the work that got into this is ridiculous. So yeah, pat yourself on the back because you deserve it, and you worked hard. And everyone's really working hard. And you can't really, I don't like, don't, you know, you can't sell that short because it's not fair or right. So, you know, everyone wants the same, they want the best for the kids, and we want to do it safely. And so I'm so excited that we're really moving toward our goal and accomplishing it. And I just want to say congratulations to everybody. And I pray, I pray that it all goes according to plan. Because sometimes it doesn't, but that's nobody's fault. I mean, we're dealing with a virus that we can't control. So, but, you know, I'm excited for everybody, especially for the young kids to get back in there. And I hope, oh, gosh, it's so nice to hear they're excited. So, it's my two cents.
I see Mrs. Richmond has her hand up.
My son, too, was a peer leader and got to give the tours to the freshmen today. And I have not seen him this excited. After he came home, he was just like beaming, running around my house like crazy. He said it was like the best thing ever. He was, he was so excited to see, he said, "The kids", you could tell that they were smiling behind their masks, their little eyes would squint up, and you could tell that they were all excited, all the freshmen. And he said it went better and more smoothly than he could have imagined. And he is just so excited, one, to be a peer leader, and two, to have, to see all the excitement of the kids and be in the school again. So thank you for doing that. I thought it was a great idea to let them come in and do the tours. And I'm excited to hear about all the little kids.
Anyone else? I just want to add that I talked to a couple of people, including Mrs. Richmond today. And I'm just so delighted to hear that kind of happiness out of the one peer leader experience. It's, I know it was good for the freshmen, it's good for the peer leaders. I'm sure it was good for the staff involved in the Peer Leaders Program, which is a wonderful program. And I, too, am looking forward to hearing more good stories after we get some more kids back to school. Does anyone else have something they'd like to add? Okay, well, with that, could we have a motion for adjournment? Mr. Salmon? And Mrs. Richmond? All in favor? All right, looks like that's everybody, Mr. McLaughlin. All right, everybody, have a good night.
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, good night.